And I'll call this Bryan Independent School District meeting to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The time is now six o'clock. Wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone. I ask that you please turn off your electronic devices and please stand for the pledges. The pledges will be recited by American flag Kent Carver and Texas flag Anson Jones.
Hi, my name is Jordan Moore and I'm in fourth grade from Kent Carver Elementary.
Hi, my name is Guadalupe Bonsa. I'm a fourth grader at Kent Carver Elementary.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Hernandez and I'm a fourth grader from Kent Carver Elementary.
Hi, my name's Brooklyn and I'm a third grader at Kent Carver Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Hello, my name is Gigi. I'm a fourth grader at Anson Jones Elementary.
Hello, my name is Andres Espinoza and I'm in third grade and I go to Anson Jones Elementary.
Hello, my name is Sofia Velasco. I'm in third grade and I go to Anson Jones Elementary.
Hi, my name is Leah Hernandez and I go to third grade and my school is Anson Jones Elementary.
Hi, my name is Samuel and I'm in fourth grade and I go to Jones Elementary.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one invisible.
That was so good.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, it was so good.
Now have our spotlight. First will be the Elementary Teachers of the Month. We have Kent Carver and Allison Bogdan, principal, will introduce.
Hello. As proud principal of Kent Carver Elementary, it is my honor to recognize Ms. Lindy Warner, fourth grade math teacher at Kent Carver Elementary. Ms. Warner strikes the perfect balance between structure and love in her classroom. She is a data-driven teacher, always challenging her students to set goals, monitor their own progress, and celebrate growth along the way. For Ms. Warner, growing students is more than a job, it's her mission. She builds strong, lasting relationships with her students while modeling a positive attitude that inspires everyone around her. Lindy might also be the most competitive person I've ever met. I consider myself to be highly competitive, but I don't have anything on this one. Okay? Whether it's a little friendly competition between teachers across the district on who has the highest math scores on assessments, or a staff basketball game while dressed in an inflatable costume, Lindy Warner knows how to have fun and crush goals. This is one of the many reasons we love her at KC. If the world had more Lindy Warners, it would be a great place. We are so proud to celebrate Ms. Warner, who is proof that when Paws in, I'll win.
All right, congratulations again. Our next teacher is Abigail Medina and she is from Jones and she will be introduced by Principal Alma Melas.
Good evening, everybody. As mentioned, my name's Alma Melas and I'm the proud principal at Jones Elementary and I'm honored to present to you our amazing Teacher of the Month, Abigail Medina. Abby teaches second grade bilingual on my campus. And it is my honor to recognize Ms. Medina this evening because she is a dedicated educator who consistently strives to do her very best in all that she does. She approaches teaching with great intentionality, carefully planning instruction that meets the diverse academic and language needs of her students. Her thoughtful design ensures that every learner has the opportunity to succeed. Beyond the classroom, Ms. Medina places a strong emphasis on building meaningful relationships. She models this daily by going above and beyond with her colleagues, for her colleagues, always willing to lend a hand or share her expertise. Her commitment extends further as she is both a student and teacher advocate, fearlessly speaking up when she sees a need and ensuring that all voices are heard. Mustafa Kamal Adeturuk once said that "A good teacher is like a candle. It consumes itself to light the way for others." This fits Ms. Medina so well because she is the kind of person that pours herself into both her students and her colleagues, always giving of her time, energy, and heart. Abby embodies the qualities of a true educator: dedication, intentionality, collaboration, and advocacy. It is with great pride that I present her to you this evening and we are truly blessed to have her at Jones. Thank you, Abby, for all that you do.
Congratulations. Okay, next we have, we're going to honor our auxiliary employee of the month and that's the Transportation Department employee is Marilyn Mitchell and the campus is Ruby Halliburton. And she will be introduced by Bryant Washington.
Hello, everyone. Tonight I'm honored to recognize Mrs. Marilyn Mitchell. She's been with Bryan ISD Transportation for over forty-five years. For four decades, Mrs. Mitchell has been the steady voice on the radio and phone, keeping our drivers informed, our parents notified, and our buses running safely and on time. Many times, her voice was the first reassurance drivers heard when trouble hit the road, giving them the confidence to keep moving forward. Mrs. Mitchell is more than a dispatcher. She's a listener, a problem solver, and a friend who has shown patient kindness and genuine love to everyone she serves. On behalf of Bryan ISD, we thank you, Mrs. Mitchell, for your loyalty, heart, and incredible impact that you have had on students, family, and transportation. And personally, I would like to thank her. She has helped my transition out a lot. With forty-seven years of historical wisdom and knowledge, she's the go-to person. And so I'm just honored to be able to present her tonight, so please join me in honoring Ms. Marilyn Mitchell.
Okay, we're not done yet. We've got National Merit Semi-finalist Recognition. This is a big deal in case anybody in the audience didn't know that. And the presenter is going to be Director of Advanced Academics, Dr. Christina Richardson.
Good evening. Tonight, we are proud to recognize two of our outstanding students who have been named National Merit Semi-finalists. This distinction is awarded to less than one percent of high school seniors across the country and is based on exceptional academic performance and high achievement on the PSAT in their junior year. These students represent the very best of Bryan ISD, demonstrating not only academic excellence, but also dedication, determination, and perseverance that it takes to achieve at this level. So tonight, we want to recognize both of those students as well as our campuses where they came from. You don't become a National Merit Semi-finalist overnight. It didn't just happen, it started when they were in elementary school. So I'm going to call their names and ask that the representatives from their campus come up with them as well. So first, we extend our congratulations to Michael Farnsworth from Rutter High School. And he began his educational journey at Houston Elementary, Rayburn Intermediate, and SFA Middle School.
Real quick about Michael, he's also a very well-rounded student. He's competed in the Varsity Gymnastics Program at Rutter. He, last year, Skills USA State Competition won the programming and has already achieved his cybersecurity industry-based certification as our computer science track at Rutter for his graduation. So he is excellent at all that he does and we are so proud of him to be from Rutter.
Yes, and Damon also. Stay in place. We've got one more, so just hang tight. All right, next, we want to extend our congratulations to Katherine Kaiser from Bryan High School. And she began her educational journey at Bowen, Jane Long, Davila, and finally Bryan High School. Congratulations.
Our next item is Fine Arts Recognition. Director of Fine Arts Jacob Justice has a presentation, several presentations.
Good evening. Good to see you all. You'll see, we have some art teachers lining up here behind me. I am thrilled to get to recognize some of our amazing students and teachers and work that was displayed at the Texas Association of School Administrators and Texas Association of School Board Convention. So this is part of the Texas EdCon and it showcases work by pre-K through 12th grade students, their works of art from across the state of Texas. The level of student and teacher achievement evidenced in this exhibition is a direct reflection of the amazing art teachers and the support of our district and our board. We could not do the things we do without your support, without our community's support. Congratulations are in order for the following students. Their artworks were displayed. I'm going to call their names and as I call their names, we're also going to call the names of their teachers and their teachers are going to give them their certificate. We're going to get a great picture and we're going to celebrate these amazing students. So first, Ava Alvarado from Crockett Elementary, whose teacher is Ms. Letitia Garcia. Benjamin Gurlik from Mary Branch Elementary and teacher, Ms. Laura Becker. Ariana Herrera from Anson Jones Elementary and teacher is Melissa Williamson. Jesus Rodriguez from Stephen F. Austin Middle School, teacher is Ms. Tara Davis. Hudson Stone from Bowen Elementary, teacher, Ms. Terry Clark. And Ariel Valiz from Bonham Elementary, teacher, Ms. Jessica Horvath. Thank you very much. We are very proud of all of our fine art students and I look forward to seeing you next month with some more great information. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we now have, we have a public comment. We have one speaker, Roy Flores, and I think it's about the bond.
Roy Flores. I have to vote no on Prop A. You're only as good as your weakest link. Looking for the best solution, building new schools in the area where children already live, not speculating on where growth might be. A new high school in, on the neglected West Side would bring a sense of pride to students, which could reduce tardiness and certainly expensive fuel costs, bus routes, and wear and tear on vehicles. This would also increase attendance and reduce the cost of building a new high school without incurring the cost of having to tear the existing one down just to rebuild it. This would be an opportunity that their classmates on the East Side have taken for granted. Currently, thanks to the short-sightedness of previous BISD boards, our four hundred and fifty square miles of district contain four high schools, two of which are each located about half a mile away from the Bryan High campus on the East Side of town. And MC Harris, the disciplinary high school, located one of our oldest buildings. This causes huge traffic problems every morning and afternoon for parents and buses from the West Side to travel to the East Side campuses. Bryan collegiate's reputation was earned by the students on the very campus you now want to tear down and rebuild. All of this during the worst economy and inflation taxpayers have seen in years and tariffs. and tariffs surely going to be higher cost of next year. And let's not forget vouchers coming in next year. It all sounds like a big gamble. Out of 16,000 students, Collegiate makes up less than 1%. Our true strength comes from supporting the weakest link to become our strongest.
You have about 30 seconds left.
I beg your pardon?
Just letting you know you have about 30 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. Can you stop that time and give me those few seconds back?
Sure.
Thank you very much. It would be prudent to wait and save millions of dollars by building a new high school on the West Side without having to tear a high school down. Together, let's ensure that the 99% of our students are supported to reach their fullest potential. Greatness is in every student. Let's focus on bringing out the best in the 99. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and as a reminder to everyone else, anyone can make a public comment on agenda items at our main meeting, that's normally on the 3rd Monday of the month, and on our other meeting, which is also going to be in the evening now, which is considered our workshop, only on agenda items. But there are, in any case, therefore, you have approximately three minutes to speak. All right, moving on, we have our call to order of public hearing. And I'm now going to recess this meeting of the Bryan and Penn School District. The time is 6:25. And again, I'll call this public hearing of the Bryan and Penn School District to order. Records show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Public Meetings Act, Texas Government Chapter 551, and the time is now 6:26. Purpose of this hearing is to discuss information pertaining to the 2025 tax rate. Following this presentation, we invite members of the public to make comments regarding this topic. Presenter is our Chief Financial Officer, Norma Frittl.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Carabine, and members of the public. Tonight's public hearing is required under the Texas Truth in Taxation and is designed to give our community a clear look at the district's proposed tax rate. We will explain how the tax rate supports our budget, separating the MNO portion, which funds day-to-day district transactions, district operations, from the INS portion, which funds for voter-approved bonded debt. After this brief overview, we'll invite public comment before the board considers formal adoption of the tax rate. Thank you for your engagement and your partnership. Sorry about that. Okay. Student success is at the heart of our work. As a public school system, we honor that mission by making sure that every dollar is aligned to student achievement. We strive to manage our resources wisely so that we can strengthen instruction, improve student outcomes, and provide a safe and supportive learning environment for all of our students. This tax rate timeline illustrates the full cycle of the budget and tax rate process. It begins with the early planning stages of the budget and continues through the point where we receive preliminary values. At that stage, we update revenue projections based on those values and then build a framework of expenditures to move forward with adopting the budget. Once certified values are received in July, we verify that our preliminary revenue estimates align closely with what was originally adopted before the board takes action on approving the tax rate. Now, before moving on to budget assumptions, I'd like to take a moment to address any confusion and misconceptions regarding the tax rate. Contrary to popular belief, school districts cannot set tax rates arbitrarily. Tax rates are highly regulated and districts have very limited authority to adjust them without either TEA approval or direct voter approval. Let's take a look. So as you can see here, our tax rate up, our tax rate is made up of two main parts, MNO and the INS, maintenance and operations, interest and sinking. The MNO portion is divided into two tiers. Tier one is set by TEA and is based on property value growth. This isn't something the district decides, it's determined entirely by the state. The second part of the MNO rate is called tier two, and this is where our enrichment pennies live. These pennies allow districts to generate extra funding above the state's basic rate. By law, voters have to approve a rate increasing through what's called a voter-approved tax rate election. In other words, the community gets the final say on whether or not additional pennies are added to support enrichment. And the final portion of the tax rate is the INS rate, and this is used to make payments on school bonds, much like making payments on a home mortgage. The district cannot raise this rate on its own. It only changes if voters approve new bonds in an election or if the board makes the decision to keep the tax rate the same in order to pay off debt early. Even in those cases, the state law caps the INS rate at 50 cents per $100 of property value. So as you can see, tax rates are not set arbitrarily, they are formula-driven and tied directly to voter approval and state law. The following slide represents a few assumptions we use in the budgeting process to determine the tax collections that factor into the state funding formula. As shown above, student enrollment is projected to remain flat. As property values increased only by about a tenth of a percent, and this is after accounting for the additional $40,000 in homestead exemption that will be on the ballot in November's election. You can also see here the anticipated MNO and INS portions of the tax rate that were incorporated into the budget, along with the estimated collection rate. And here is a summary of all of the required board-adopted budgets that were approved back in June. As we know, the general fund is in a budget deficit. Our debt service budget is expected to remain balanced after making the required debt payments. Food service is also in a deficit position, however, that is by design. Thorough law limits the amount of fund balance that school districts can retain. We currently have a spending plan in place to bring that balance down in order to stay in compliance with TDA requirements. And here is our tax rate history since 2016. As you can see, the rate has steadily declined over time and it's projected to remain the same as the prior year. Here we have a summary of our estimated revenue for the district's debt service alongside our projected debt payments, which also reflects the anticipated hold-harmless state revenue associated with the increased homestead exemption. Just as a reminder, these figures are estimates and may change based on actual tax collections received and any future legislative action. This is an example of a tax bill for an average home value in our area, showing a comparison between last year and this year. As you can see, the homestead exemption has increased by $40,000. That means that the same tax rate is applied to a lower taxable home value. The result is less tax owed on this property. A common misunderstanding is that school districts arbitrarily raise their tax rates and are the primary driver of rising property taxes. That simply isn't true. If your tax bill goes up, it's usually because the appraised value of your home increased, not because the school district raised its tax rate. And remember, the school district is only one of several taxing entities on your bill. So it's important to review the bill entirely and carefully. To summarize, we recommend leaving the tax rate unchanged from last year, and that is .9469. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions.
This is a public hearing, so it's primarily for the purpose of presenting to the public and answering any questions that the public might have. We're not going to be taking any action at this point. We do have an agenda item later in the budget regarding this same topic. Anybody? There being no further business, public hearing is adjourned at 6:37? No, excuse me, 6:32. And I will now, and thank you, by the way, Norma. And now we will reconvene the regular meeting of the Bryan and Penn School District at 6:32. We'll start with Superintendent Report spotlighting student and staff celebrations. Ms. Carabine?
Thank you, Mr. Stasny. Get that clicker real quick. Clay brings that forward. We're going to start with a spotlight on the month of September. We blinked and it's almost October, but we celebrated September with the Essential Eight. Our monthly term for September was all about kindness, and you can see in these photos right here, we went around asking all of our kids, what does that mean to you when you think about the Essential Eight and character development? What does kindness mean? This is just a small sampling that they said kindness means holding the door open, standing up for others, making people feel happy, you know, kids that are maybe sad or mad. So we had a really great moment and educational opportunity to talk to our kids about character development, again, all about kindness for September. Moving on, this recognition bears repeating, we just celebrated our two national merit finalists, and I just want to say it one more time. These kids represent less than 1% of all high school seniors, so this is quite an honor for Bryan ISD. And I think it's amazing that Kathryn came from four different schools than Michael, Bryan High School, Davila, Jane Long, Bowen, Rutter High School, SFA, Rayburn, and Sam Houston Elementary. And I think Ms. Layton said it best, it does not start their senior year of high school, starts in kindergarten. So this is quite the accomplishment and we are very, very proud of our two students. Speaking of proud, Ms. Waller and I had the good fortune of attending the 47th Annual Burgess Hall of Honor. This banquet was extra special for us because we shined a light on our very own. That night, Rod Bernstein was inducted into the Texas A&amp;M Athletics Hall of Fame. Rod graduated Bryan High School back in 1983, went on to play for Texas A&amp;M University, and then had quite the career in NFL. He played for the San Diego Chargers and the Denver Broncos. Ms. Waller and I may or may not have rushed him when he walked into the room to get autographs on a football in a jersey. We, he took a lot of pictures with us and has a connection to Ms. Waller because she was a coach at Rutter, I mean, I'm sorry, at Bryan High School when he was a student there. So he was very proud to return home and to indulge our autograph session and just represented Bryan ISD in all the best ways. Ms. Waller, did you want to add anything to the slides?
His sons were there and they were taking tons of pictures with Ginger and I and him because they had never had anybody, or they'd never met the Bryan High people. I mean, they'd met his friends from Bryan High, but to think that we came and we're just so excited to see him and his sons thought that was really, really neat, they're very proud of him, as we are. And I have to tell you that there's probably almost 700 people at the Burgess banquet, all these famous Aggies and famous coaches. And of course, we make reservations and we were there to represent BISD where Rod graduated. But the MC introduced five real VIPs, and it was RC Slocum, Jackie Sherrill, who were the other, oh my gosh, I can't think.
I know where you're going with this.
Two real famous athletes that were there, and then Ginger Carabine, Superintendent of Bryan ISD. So I thought that was really, really neat that of all the people that were there, Ms. Carabine got introduced.
Thank you, Ms. Waller.
She didn't expect it, I know. It was really, really neat.
I did not expect it. It was a lot of fun and his family was very proud of him. They knew him as an NFL player or, you know, playing for the Aggies, so they did not ever get to experience what it was like of him growing up in Bryan, Texas, playing for the Bryan Vikings. So it was a very special night for all of us, so good time for all. Finally, we are very proud that Bryan ISD participated heavily in the recent Destination Bryan Spiestas Padre Parade in downtown Bryan. In fact, we joked walking away saying that it's kind of turned into the Bryan ISD parade because we had over 15 different schools and departments represented. Our kids and our staff and our families showed up in full force and it was just a great day again for Bryan ISD, shining a light on another really incredible day. And then the final slide of all, this just happened this past weekend, as you know, we have a strong partnership with Read by Third led by Mr. Daniel Hernandez, a local community member, and in recent years, he had been partnering with Jones Elementary. Well, with Ms. Montoya's leadership, we have expanded the program to include not only Jones Elementary again, but Henderson, Navarro, and Fannin, and you can see in this photo, because we expected the turnout to be large, we moved it to the boardroom for that Saturday, and the photo speaks a thousand words. Those are family members and students and some of our staff volunteering their time on a Saturday to show up and to partner with Bryan ISD, not about just reading and reading by third grade, but involving our families. This is the epitome of family and community engagement and making sure that our families understand all the resources we offer in Bryan ISD, and not just in our school district, but resources in our community. We are all in for the community here and we could not be more proud with the turnout. And we have more meetings planned throughout the year, so we hope that others can join us over time. So any questions, Mr. Stasny?
Anybody? That was great. And I was there for a little while and then I had to go to another, another meeting, but it was, it was a great turnout. Next item is committee reports, along with one that's not technically a committee, it's Education Foundation Update, and we'll start with Executive Board Committee Report by Mr. Bryan.
Thank you. The executive board meeting took place on September 3rd here at 3:30 PM. Mrs. Carabine, Dr. Merrill, Mrs. Frittl, Mr. Stasny, Mrs. Benford, and myself were present for the discussion. The, a lot of the discussion at that meeting pertained to the topic of insurance premium adjustments, which will be on the agenda this evening. In addition, there was an update on discussions with freestanding emergency care facilities in, in our community in terms of their relationship with Bryan ISD, and I think we're working through some things there and making some progress in terms of how that relationship is, but overall, it was an update on that situation as well as the impact this has on our budget and overall fund balance for the future. And then there was a, there was a few items related to conduct where identities couldn't be disclosed, so that was, that was kind of the majority of that meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? And next committee is Intergovernmental Committee Report, Ms. Benford.
Yes, good evening. We met September the 15th at 12:00 PM noon. The meeting was attended by myself, Ms. Waller, and Ms. Carabine. The meeting was mostly led by the Acting Judge Kyle Casell. He gave us an update on some things that the county now are doing. They have taken over the parking garage that is downtown, it now belongs to the county. They talked about the building that is going to go across the street where the old Bryan ISD building was for years, and they're going to add another floor to the parking garage and they're going to add another floor to that building that they're going to be building. Totally the price with the Skybridge and those buildings, somewhere between 60 to 70 million dollars. And that is also going to create new positions for that office that will be in those buildings. The Expo Center will be updated, they're beginning with that now because of the growth and the usage of that facility, they needed to add, do some additions, some remodeling, renovations, so that is in progress right now. We did talk about the medical examiner's office. Due to the rain, they got a little bit behind, but now they're back up. They did announce a female medical examiner and she was in the news, I think a day or two ago, coming from Travis County. Really looking forward to partnering with her. She has created a gaming system that's going to be something very positive for our students. And when we go to Intergovernmental, anyone that presents, that's the first thing we ask them, what can you do for our students? How can our students join in on whatever it is that you have going on? And so really looking excited at that gaming system and how we can get on board for that. The opening will be June 2026 for that building. And just a lot of plans going forward, they're planning to have a blood lab in the future. Roland Bridge is getting a new facelift. Rolling Bridge is getting a new facelift. Precinct Two getting new roads. And they're trying to use more local businesses when they start doing these projects. They want to use local business instead of trying to go out. So just a lot of exciting news going on in Brazos County.
Thank you, Ms. Benford. Next on the list is Education Foundation Update by Ms. Waller.
And I am a member of that committee. So since August, we welcome back with excitement kicking off the new school year with Bryan ISD convocation. Thanks to Mitch and Donna Moorhead, the Education Foundation has been able to give away $5,000 in cash prizes. And that occurred at convocation. And it was a special day announcing the Paws Program, which has received so much positive feedback about this new initiative and can't wait to welcome puppies into some of the school buildings as friends and soft calming friends for the students. August brought Hometown Reunion and a sellout crowd of excited Bryan ISD supporters. Our staff and board worked extra hard to ensure the night was a success, which it was. We're still finalizing numbers and paying final invoices. But we're extremely pleased with the support of the community and thanked all the community for helping Hometown Reunion be a success again. We don't have a bottom line on the money raised yet, definitely not when we're ready to announce. But one of the highlights is that we had 900 guests and that $79,000 was raised during our Call to Action Moment alone. In August, we welcomed Katie Stover, our team, to the team as a new development and events manager. We're entering our third week of our employee giveback campaign where employees can designate part of their paycheck to go right to the foundation, which in turn typically goes back to that employee's school. And listen to this, the foundation has raised over 48,000 through that giveback campaign this year for the school year. We will do one final push and try to hit $50,000 goal. And all of this money goes back to the teachers and the students. We're blown away by the generosity of our Bryan ISD staff and their willingness to support our programs and initiatives. Reminder, teacher grants applications are due September 23rd, so Wednesday, just a reminder. And they've had just a wonderful, wonderful turnout for applicants for the teacher grants. And that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. And we have one more committee. We're back around to Mr. Bryan for the City School Committee.
Thank you. City School Joint Committee Meeting occurred on August 19th here in this room at noon. It was a well-attended meeting with three board members from Bryan ISD in attendance, three council members in attendance from City of Bryan, as well as Bryan ISD staff as well, and City of Bryan staff. It was an opportunity for us to come together and, and have a good productive discussion about things that are, that are current and, and ways that we're collaborating together. Mrs. Carabine shared a state of the district, including highlights from convocation, community pep rally, hometown reunion, and also about some of our upcoming opportunities for family and community engagement. Dr. Merrill and Mrs. Carabine also shared a factual, high-level overview of the 2025 bond and introduced the proposition components. And there was a discussion around those items. The City of Bryan shared an overview of the success from the Games of Texas, where we had the privilege of, of collaborating with the city in, in terms of use of our facilities, which was exciting to see. I don't know if anybody saw some of the scaffolding and seating around.
Bryan Aquatic.
Bryan Aquatic Center, but it was a massive structure, which was really cool to see. And that was one thing that I came across. And also, the City of Bryan shared a road construction update for Mumford Road and the impact on the CTE complex. Mr. Bryant Washington, Director of Transportation, was in the meeting and had an opportunity to get that information firsthand. And I know he'll be processing how that, we should address that for the district. And there was a discussion with Councilmember Arrington regarding clarification about the Bryan ISD bus transportation. But overall, it was a, it was a great discussion, a great opportunity to get together, and I was excited to be a part of it and, and look forward to our next time to, to get together.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Again, it's been great to be able to get together with the city folks and, and learn, learn about what's, what's going on and especially how we can work together. That's great. Okay, the next item, four board members and, and Ms. Carabine were able to make it to the convention that was in Houston. The, was mentioned earlier, the TASSA, Tasby Convention, that basically most of the, of the districts in, in Texas send representatives. And that's another opportunity to learn and also celebrate success. And it's a lot of that was, was very, very positive and uplifting, some good speakers. This is an opportunity once again to share a little bit of what was learned without necessarily spending a lot of time on it. I've got a few notes. Does anybody else who was able to attend have any, anything they'd like to comment on?
Well, I know that we did a legislative update with our attorney several weeks ago. It was a very long training. And I did attend another hour of that at the conference because, you know, there just continues to be so many things coming out of Austin. And one of the things that I learned in attending this particular one is that there's still a lot of ambiguity about many of the laws that were passed that are contradictory, that are confusing. And it, it's really difficult for all school districts to navigate. So part of the, the good part of that is that we learned that we are not alone, that others are dealing with that too, as we wait for clarity on, on much of those discussions. School safety is still really important, as is budgeting. I attended a couple of sessions on those kinds of things. And what I left with is nothing I heard was new to me, which was good because that meant we are exactly where we need to be, if not ahead of the curve. So much appreciation to our staff and to our superintendent for all the work that they do to keep us on track.
Thank you. Anybody else?
This is a picture of us pointing to our students' artwork.
I was going to mention that, too.
I know. I wish we'd had it up. But the students that were recognized earlier, it's so neat. There was a beautiful display in the middle of the exhibit hall. And so all we had to do was, we're Bryan, where are? And all of a sudden, the lady said, oh, Bryan, you're over here. And so all these pictures are our students and we are so very, very proud.
She was trying to get it up.
Yeah. But is it up there? Oh, good. There it is. Yay. I wish we, yeah, so the students you saw a minute ago, these were their display. So we had our students with us in Houston.
Yeah, that was cool. All right. Anything else? Warner, I want to know, Ruthie, Waller, excuse me. Anything else, Ms. Waller? I'll get you right in a minute. Anything else?
I agree with Julie. You know, we, we went to learn and we found out that we're pretty much ahead of the curve on a lot of things. It shows how much our cabinet and our administration is on top of things and getting us information as soon as we can. And that we're not in this alone. You know, every, every school district has the same issues that we do, but it was, it was good to be together and collaborate.
Well, my, yeah, my notes kind of reinforced that as well because, and I've talked a little bit about, Ms. Carabine, about this, that one presentation I went to was from New Braunfels and it was about how the budget process worked. And they had gone from the board that was basically just getting information sort of when, when it was ready to approve and, and, and that kind of, they felt like kind of rubber stamping. And so they've, they've started really trying to involve the board throughout the year in the budget process. And my understanding is that to the, you know, we've done some of that in the past, but I think we're going to kind of double down on that. And with Ms. Frittle, we're going to be getting more information during the year so that, so that it's, not anything's going to be certainly a surprise, not, not again that that's what's been going on. I think we've been doing a great job. I'm thrilled with, with the way we are handling things financially in our district and we have so much to be proud of. But it, it certainly won't hurt for us to be more involved throughout the year to kind of know things, how, how they're developing, what we might be looking at before we get to the, to the final numbers. Now, of course, that's all made more difficult by uncertainty and legislative years when we don't even know what we're going to get, you know, money-wise from the state, but we have at least a little more ability to plan for this, this, this upcoming year with the legislature meeting only once every two years. So that was that. Also, I, I went to a couple of sessions on CTE. And once again, it pretty much reinforced what we're already doing, which is comforting because there's a lot of emphasis on partnerships and, and that if you don't have good partnerships with businesses and professionals out in the community, then, then you're probably not going to have, do as well as you could be doing with CTE and what is called work-based learning. That's a term I wasn't really that familiar with, but it's just another way to talk about what we're teaching kids who maybe aren't necessarily looking to go to college. So lots of positive news there. It's a lot of talk about how that's where the future is. There was quite a bit discussion about AI and how that's going to be part of CTE. And I don't know if I'm excited about that or not, but, but they were certainly excited about it and just saying, well, that's something that, you know, you got to deal with is that there, a lot of, a lot of businesses want students to know how, you know, how AI works and they're not always looking for college grads. They're just looking for really smart kids that are able to handle that. And, and when somebody asks a question about what, what do you, well, what are you supposed to train them in? And it's a part of, a lot of it is soft skills. And I know that's what, what a lot of businesses look for, is the ability in our day and age to communicate, to learn how to be respectful of others and if they're not already. But it's, it's a skill actually that they look for in, in the business community now. And that was critically important to a successful CTE program. Let's see, also went to advocacy in the interim presented by Tasby GR in Government Relations, Docx Gonzalez, he's been with them for many years and some of, some of y'all may know him. I've certainly known him for many years. He was saying, you know, when, when do we start talking about the next session? He said the time is now. And part of it was about just really doing what we already have a head start on with, with the strategic planning and, and what has turned into the Bond Committee to make sure that we have people that are not just Ms. Carabine or board members advocating for our school district. We need community members to do it, just like we need for the bond. And so they even had a these printed up, said, hey, take them as you want. We don't want to take them back to, back to Austin. So I've got one for everybody, Toolkit for Community Advocacy. Don't, don't leave without one. And it's, you know, you can go ahead and just hand some down. And let's see, I might have given you any.
I think this is good. Thank you.
So, so it's, it's something that we need to take seriously. If somebody, if we don't have the community, parents and, and students and others telling our story, then we're probably not going to have the influence that we'd like to have to make sure that, that we are treated as, as we feel like public schools are justified in being treated since unfortunately, we all know about the negativity that has been out there. And I'm, I'm one of those people, and I know despite everybody in this room probably is that way, is that we, we believe that, that we've got so many people that are not overpaid, that are working very, very hard to, to accomplish almost what amounts to a miracle with some kids because of, and, and this is just, again, you got to tell that story or it's, unfortunately, a different story will be told by others. I think that's pretty much all that I will address. Again, it was a, it was a good, a good opportunity and also just an opportunity to see other people that, that, that I know every time I turn around, Ms. Carabine was seeing somebody that she knew. And it was a good, good opportunity to interact with others. Well, I will mention one other thing. There was a, I went to a session about the HEB Teacher Survey. It was Charles Buck Teacher Survey. And that's out there, you can look at it online. Surprise, surprise, some of the main issues with teachers, student discipline, interacting with parents in the community, listening to teacher opinions, meaning they want to be heard, and non-instructional tasks, much of which is nothing that we can necessarily fix right away. We can certainly work on these things, but some of them, we are, you know, we need the legislature to, to open their eyes. We are, I know as a district, we're working very hard on student discipline and, and we're doing, I think, an incredible job with interacting with parents in the community. And we do surveys and some districts don't do that. We're doing the surveys that we are listening to teachers. So, so again, what this does is reinforce that we're on the right track. All right, well, let's move on. We have another, we have an informational item. And this is requested by a board member about possible, you know, district use or how we're using legal counsel. And we have a presentation by Dr. Ibarra and our Chief Financial Officer, Norma Frittle.
Thank you, Mr. Stasny. All right, good evening, everyone. This evening, we've been asked to provide a high-level overview of legal services for the district, how they're utilized, and what price and point we utilize to kind of move forward with it. So just quickly, as a high-level overview, as a part of governance, and I know I'm talking to those who probably know this best and better than anyone else in the district, but in Texas public schools, the legal counsel represents the district as an entity, not the individuals within the district. So the sole purpose of a legal counsel for the district is to represent the Board of Trustees and to protect the district's interests. And we look at that in terms of compliance with laws. We look at it in terms of representing some legal matters and providing advice when we're developing agreements with other entities. There are a lot of different reasons why you would engage a legal counsel. So over the course of the years, Bryan ISD has had various approaches to working with various legal partners and councils, much like many other districts. So there are two approaches at least. One is that you can hire an in-house legal counsel that works with your outside counsel partnerships. The other is to simply work directly with those outside counsel partnerships and law firms. And there are pros and cons to each entity or each approach to legal representation. So I'll go through them very briefly. Right now, as a district, we've tried both approaches. Currently, we are under the, the one there on the left, retaining outside law firms based on specialties. As you might expect, there are a number of topics that come across both the superintendent's desk and of course, each of your desks as a board member. Things from easements to special education, to employment practices, to student issues, all, all of the cabinet there. And I think we mentioned earlier, the legislative updates that have come through from the A9 Legislature. So all of that comes together in, in needing various specialties. If you outsource to all, that gives you that great breadth of expertise where you can be flexible and you can scale on what you need in that particular moment. For example, Texas Association of School Boards provides all of our legal counsel and guidance predominantly for our board policies. They produce them all for the state of Texas as well as for our school district. And they give us guidance on the local interpretation of the policies so that they stay in alignment with the legal statute of the policies. This is oftentimes seen as more efficient because you don't have that middle person in, as an in-house counsel, working with the outside entities. But it also means there are various people working directly with. But it also means there are various people working directly with those law firms, and there's not a single point of contact that's coordinating all of it. It's by expertise and need. For example, Mrs. Frittl will be working with all of the financial advisors, where I would work with perhaps special education or student issues. And it also gives us an access to a broader network of law firms. On the right-hand side, you have all the benefits of the outside legal counsel, but then you have an inside legal counsel that works as a liaison with all of the outside entities. And we have had that previously in the district. You still incur the costs of all of the outside entities in addition to the salary for the in-house counsel. But the in-house counsel typically has a deeper knowledge of the district, in some respects typically more available or more immediately available to district staff to deal with quick issues where we wouldn't have to go out to a legal counsel who may be on retainer. And of course, those aren't typically charged, but at the same point, it'd be quick access to that information. So again, both options are certainly viable depending on the scope and scale of what a district needs. Most districts that are mid-size or smaller tend to do what we're doing now, which is work directly with outside law firms. Larger-scale districts with higher populations typically go with an in-house counsel or a team of them in addition to their outside counsel, depending on their needs of those districts. So what are the different categories and the specialties that we're talking about? In general, comprehensive school law services, it's the whole umbrella, it's personnel, it's student issues, special education, which by itself is its own entity, facilities, business, all sorts of things. Board policy services, as I talked about a moment ago, is the Texas Association of School Boards. That comes with our membership to TASB and they do provide counsel, but even they will tell you, this is our advice, please run it by your legal counsel. And so they want to make sure that you're double-checking against another entity. For public school bonds, I'm going to turn the rest of these over to Mrs. Frittl, this is her area of expertise. Go ahead, Ms. Frittl.
These are kind of straightforward here too. So public school bonds, we have services from Norton Rose Fulbright, I'm so sorry about that, and we use them to secure bond counsel whenever we need any kind of information. They're actually helping us, you know, with all the do's and don'ts with implementing a bond. Public school finance, we also use Ohanlin, Demereth and Castillo. They help us with our 313 agreements, our Jedi agreements, so anytime we have any questions related to that, we go ahead and reach out to them. And specialized employment situations, work visas, we utilize Wesley Mathis Law, so if we have any HR issues or any type of employment questions, we reach out to them. And then we use Ray and Wood for property value audits. So about every two to three years, we conduct property value audits with the state. So if there's any changes with state values, that has a direct impact on funding for school districts. So we work with them to make sure that we are constantly updating that state funding template and getting anything that is due for the school district current year and prior years as well.
So again, this was a very, very high-level overview. Are there specific questions that we can answer for you as the board or Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, if I may, and I appreciate you. I'm the one that, as you all know, asked for this to be put on and I thank Ms. Carabine and Mr. Stasny for allowing this to be on and so quickly. And I just really did kind of want an overview, I really want to have a question about, and I probably should have asked you, but I don't want to catch you off-guard. How big of a difference when we did have in-house counsel? Is there any cost savings with having in-house counsel? And I realize as an attorney, that we all have our special areas of expertise, and I think it would be virtually impossible to find anyone that would, we couldn't afford him if we could, or her, if we could find someone that had a complete grasp of all of the topics that are shown here. But is there any cost savings to having an in-house attorney? Or since you said they're all on retainer, is it just the extra $100,000, $150,000 and we're still having to go to our specialty attorneys anyway?
Sure. So back in the past when we did have, it actually works out in some ways, both ways. So certainly there are some opportunities for savings where we're not doing the quick calls for retainer or perhaps a memorandum of understanding or a lease agreement. Depending on the expertise of a particular in-house counsel, they can handle things like that. Should we hire an in-house counsel who has expertise in special education? It may reduce the need for that kind of outsourcing. By and large, it's relatively the same, but you will see some savings in terms of those moments depending on the expertise of the counsel who is hired. But mostly, we're still outsourcing to those other areas and that person serves as a liaison.
Okay, but there's not a huge, it is not the full...
Which is why we went the other way and we went back to just working directly where I'll work with mine and run it by Mrs. Carabine and likewise.
And I know that the previous boards have looked into...
Alucard, yes, that's a great way of putting it.
Into this, so, and as far as, like, my concern, you know, I'm on different, with the city on different commissions, and we always have attorneys present for our closed sessions. Actually, we don't have any closed sessions, we have an attorney present for every meeting. Now, I don't know, is it cost-effective or is it something that would be considered under any kind of retainer where we could have maybe like a phone, someone on the phone with us in the boardroom when we are speaking, you know, we...
That's a great question.
If that's something we could do, I think that would be, you know, we've done a good job, you know, Mr. Stasny keeps an eye on us as well, so we're, you know, we don't stray, we don't, but I want...
It does help having two attorneys on the board.
It does, it does, and that's really helpful. But I think, you know, especially with everything that we're going into, I think it would be helpful to have, I think if any of us have questions, you know, hopefully this bond goes through and we're going to have lots of questions about that, and it would be nice to have somebody there so that the public knows, hey, here's what we're doing, we're asking, how do we do this? And everybody knows that we are doing everything the way we're supposed to. So I would like to see, you know, I don't know how we'd get it on the agenda...
Well, if I could just explain for a quick moment...
Yes, ma'am.
That, you're exactly right, there are opportunities for legal counsel to come into closed session or into board meetings as the board deems necessary, and we do post for those. It's actually why you'll see various people on the agenda or sometimes waiting in the audience and they wait until closed session because we're posted for legal counsel or legal advice in closed session. Dr. Harling, you mentioned earlier when our legal counsel was here to provide a legislative update, that was actually legal advice regarding the legislative update, which is why it was conducted in closed session. They can certainly always be on a phone call, but you do have to post for the actual purpose for that attorney to be on a phone call. Otherwise, you would need to pay them to drive in, be here for the evening, and then drive back, which could be very costly.
So it's, so we can't just tell them every time we have a meeting, we want you on the call, as if they were...
You have to post for the exact reason why you want them on the call, legal counsel or legal advice on what have it be. And you certainly could do that, and we could certainly investigate that.
But it's not, okay, so, and that was, that's what I thought would be a good solution, is just have counsel...
To say the travel would...
When we go, exactly, if they're going to drive down and go back there with us, I didn't think there'd be any difference with them being on a call.
Well, we can certainly look into that and bring you that information.
If you would.
And put it before the board of trustees.
If I can just jump in, I was on the board, well, I've been on the board nine years now, and so have observed these different scenarios. So when I got here, we had in-house counsel that was here, who had to call for specialty things, and the answer typically was, I think maybe, hmm, not sure, let me check with the specialty area. So it was never immediate answers that way either. They would almost always want to check answers because I'm not an attorney, but that's my observation of many attorneys, they like to make sure that they're getting things right before they say it. So when we had that person, when they left to go to another district, we hired another in-house counsel. And when they departed, this, the board at the time evaluated those options. Do we hire another in-house counsel or do we use the model that we're using now? And as Dr. Ibarra so eloquently shared, there are pros and cons to both. But having also been board president, one of the things that we do in consultation with the superintendent is look at the agenda items to determine what might we need counsel for. Do we have them on standby for the phone? Or do we post for that? Do we have them drive in? And there have been times where we do all of those things depending on what the needs are. So I'd say that that's probably something that's done, if not at the executive committee level, it's done with the president and the superintendent making those decisions.
Let me kind of add to that a little bit. I think that, that it, one thing that is always a good idea is to err on the side of at least checking with the attorney to see if this is okay, is this, not just maybe making our own evaluation, of course, but, and I think that's what we do. If we think that, I think we have a good history of the administration and whoever's working with the superintendent or president is, again, err on the side of being careful and say, well, are we sure that this is okay to do in, you know, something in closed session or not? And I mean, that's one of the things, of course, that is very important to the board is that issue. And then, of course, you need lawyers for lots of other reasons. But it is, it's a tough question, I think it's worth, it's certainly worth discussing, it's a tough question because of the quality of your, if you did hire somebody to be full-time, which I don't, I don't know that that's really being necessarily advocated, it's not, I'm sure, you know, it works for a lot of districts, but then, I assume the better that attorney is at doing things, the more they're going to cost.
More expensive.
And I guess, I guess the only other comment I would make is that we, if we totaled up all the time, and yes, and maybe we spend, we could spend less time in closed session if we sped things up a little bit somehow. But if we, you know, if we had somebody all the time, I expect that the hourly rate being what it is for good attorneys would probably be pretty substantial, so we'd have to take that into account. This is an information item and I think we've had some good discussion. Anybody else have any more questions? I think you were asking for some specific information and we need to try to get that.
And I appreciate that very much. The reason, another reason I think it would be good to speak to the whole board is, the way it is now, it is, the whole board doesn't have access to legal counsel. You know, I've disagreed sometimes with our board or president, and I don't have, you know, I don't think any of us can just talk to an attorney. You know, it's only the executive counsel. So if we had somebody on all the time, that would be another advantage is if we had a question, if there was a disagreement, it's kind of nice to have an arbiter there that they can say, you know, both of you are wrong, you're both right, or, you know, this is a non-issue. So that is the only other thing, is that the way it's set up now, we don't have direct access to, we can't ask a question. So if we had a counsel here, counsel here, we could ask during our meetings, hey, this is, this is my concern, this is my concern. We don't have that ability. And like Mr. Stasny said, that decision is made for us whether we might need counsel at a meeting. So, you know, but I don't want, I obviously don't want to burden us with any more expenses right now. You know, we're doing everything, we're tightening our belt everywhere, so I'm not trying to advocate for spending another $100,000 or $150,000 if it's going to be needlessly spent. But I would like to at least visit, visit that and see if it's something that might be, might be worthwhile and if there is some cost savings by having an attorney on, and like you said, part-time might be another option as well, so.
Yeah.
Doing this so quickly, Barbara, and I appreciate y'all very much, I know y'all didn't have any time to get this together, but it is something that I've been wanting to ask about and I sincerely appreciate the hard work on it.
And it's certainly fine for, if you have any questions, like any other board member, email them to Mrs. Carabine, we're happy to give those to a lawyer and then provide the response to, to all the board members as well.
Okay.
Happy to do so. That way everyone still has access and has transparency with the information. Happy to do so.
I don't want, from this conversation, I don't want anybody to leave here with the idea or thought that in closed session, we go back and have arguments or disagreements. It's not like that. So I just...
Yeah, it's not that much fun back there, we get along. Yeah, sorry, sorry, if that's what I, if that's what I said, yeah, it's not that much fun. I thought it was a lot more fun before I got on the board, I saw all kinds of brawls, but it is not like that.
We certainly understand the complexities of public education, all of the questions, no problem at all.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, just one more comment on what you said just a moment ago. I would want every board member to be able to say, I think we have a legal question here. And whether it would be, well, you just, on your own, just call the attorney, that's one way to approach it. Another way to approach it is say, let's just, let's just do, be in on the call, I'm not opposed to that, I don't know how others feel. I'm not, I'm not real comfortable with the idea that we have this attorney and any one of us could just without...
Rack up a bill.
... notice anybody else just start calling the attorney out. And because attorney, for one thing, is going to get kind of like, oh, who am I?
Who do I answer to?
Am I supposed to take sides here? So if there's a disagreement. But I do think that it's not a matter of just, oh, it should be only the board president, it should be whoever has a legitimate legal question. That needs to be presented and not necessarily with the entire board being involved, because that takes a meeting. But, you know, that's something that we need to explore. It's not, it shouldn't be shut out from getting good legal advice. TASB, I think, is really available to all of us and they can be of some help, and they don't, they don't cause us anything for the most part, at least I don't think they do if we use them. So unless it's some kind of specialized thing that we ask them for. So that is also another option. So let's continue that discussion another time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we do want to make sure everybody's comfortable with our legal advice. Okay, where are we? Let's see, we now have, I think we're up to the consent agenda, so if you haven't already, look that over, see if there's anything you would like to remove from the consent agenda for a separate consideration. And if not, then...
Mr. Stasny, I move approval of all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
Sorry, Felicia.
All right, motion laid by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Benford. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to action items. Consider all matters incident related to the issuance of the sale of Bryan Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bond, Tax Series 2025, including the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of such bond, levying on ad verum tax for the payment of such bond and resolving other matters in connection therewith. Everybody get that? Okay, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Carabine. This evening, we are joined by Mr. Steve Adams, our district's financial advisor, and he is with specialized public finance. He will be sharing the bid results with us and provide an update on the district's refunding transaction.
Thank you. I'd also like to introduce Paul Jason with our firm and outside counsel, the bond counsel who wrote your agenda item, Bob Grantsville and Kristen Savant are here with Norton Rose Fulbright. So we did take bids for the refunding that we've been discussing for the last several meetings. We received three bids, the winning bid was Frost Bank at 3.99%. Recall that we showed the board 5.25%. It was higher, we knew we had some room in there, but the Federal Reserve Board lowered the discount rate in the interim, so to the benefit of the district. So we showed the board savings, cash flow savings of 11.2 million. We in fact will have 11,353,280 in cash flow savings, present value savings of $356,000, a little bit more than that, or 2.3% of what we refunded. If you approve this tonight, we will close on October the 15th after Norton Rose Fulbright and their team has all these documents approved by the Attorney General's Office. Just as kind of, we sent this out to 80 banks, which are on our list, this is a little bit big for most of them and it's a little bit specialized as well, but we did get three bids, which we were very happy with, which were with, you know, larger banks because of the size of this. And you can see we got a bid from Texas Capital Bank and PNC Bank as well, but you can see that Frost Bank won, so we're happy to get that bid from Frost Bank. And they're happy to do business with the district and wanted me to say that.
PNC's a legal counsel, must be really good.
Yeah, well, we take that into account. Anyway, we don't, we don't have to pay that.
Yes, sir.
They did not win. Just a reminder, this refunding is moving debt to this tax year that was in line with the hearing that you just had for the INS tax rate of 27 cents, and I think an agenda item a little later on. This just shows the savings, the 11,353,000 in interest that we're saving by doing this transaction. And the present value of all of those savings is 356,798,000. Just the sources and uses of funds, and we are paying 118,000 of cost of issuance out of this as well. And then finally, or almost finally, this is the calendar that we've gone through, we had the September 8th meeting with the board, we distributed the documents for the banks to bid on, we received those bids on Friday, and then tonight is the award, and then again, the delivery on October the 15th. With that, we are recommending that Bryan... the 15th. With that, we are recommending that Bryan ISD Board award the 15,364,864,000 General Obligation Refunding Bonds taxable series 2025 to Frost Bank. And we're here, and bond counsel is here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you for getting us a better deal. That's exciting.
Thank the Fed, but we'll take credit.
Yeah, no, it's exciting.
Anybody wants to make a motion, take a deep breath first.
Come on, Zell.
I'll take a stab at it. I move to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of the Bryan Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bond taxable series 2025, specifying the terms and features of such bond, levying a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of such bond, and resolving other matters incident and related to the issuance, sale, payment, and delivery of such bond, including the approval and execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase letter, and an escrow agreement, providing for the redemption of the bonds being refunded, and providing an effective date.
Second. That's a good job, Mr. Dr. Harland. I will do the second real easily.
Well, thank you for writing that so well.
Motion made by Dr. Harland, and, and, it was a second, Neil? Mr. Gonzalez, okay, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. He got the easy part. Okay.
It was a group effort.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. It's unanimous. Okay, we got one more piece of the puzzle.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is discussing, consider approval of group benefits risk pool plan design changes and employee medical and dental plan premium recommendations for 2026. So, this, this is something that we're dealing with now, but it will be, if, depending on what we do tonight, will, will not go into effect until the first of the year, correct?
Mm-hmm. Once again, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Carabine. Tonight, we are reviewing the proposal for our benefits plan for 2026, which includes changes specifically to our medical and dental plan offerings. At our last meeting, we discussed several reasons why these changes are necessary, with medical inflation being one of the most significant pressure points of the plan. It is evident that we cannot remain on the same path without jeopardizing the long-term stability of the fund. Tonight, we bring forward changes to protect the plan, and most importantly, to preserve the benefits that our employees and their families depend on. Here's what we'll be covering this evening. We will begin with a quick look back at highlights from our last board meeting. Then, we'll review the proposed renewal rates for our health and dental plans, and then talk about what those changes could mean for employee paychecks. After that, we'll highlight the resources that are shared and available to employees, such as newsletters, flyers, so that our staff are always, always have a way to check on their benefits throughout the year. And finally, we'll wrap up by revisiting the timeline that we shared at our last board meeting. As you recall from our prior meeting, one of the recommendations we are bringing forward is to discontinue the HMO plan. Because of its restricted and limited nature, this has been the most underutilized plan that we currently offer. By moving to two plan options, we'll be able to keep the same quality of care that employees rely on. They will continue to have access to all of their current providers, so there will be no disruption of care. And on top of that, they'll benefit from the expanded services from our employee health clinic. Another recommendation for this evening's discussion is the proposal to streamline our dental offerings by consolidating three plans into two. This consolidation would simplify choices for employees while creating significant savings and efficiencies. With the proposed structure, employees would experience lower monthly premiums. But, most employ, most importantly, employees and their dependents would not experience any disruption in care when using in-network providers. In addition, administrative costs would decrease, and the structure would promote greater in-network utilization. The primary difference between the current and proposed structure is the out-of-network, is how out-of-network providers are currently reimbursed. Currently, plans pay a percentage of the average local cost, which in our case is tied to the Houston area rates. Under the proposed plan, out-of-network services would be reimbursed at a fixed dollar amount, meaning that any cost above that amount would be the employee's responsibility. Now, we, before we move on to discussing premium rates, I'd like to remind the board that Bryan ISD contributes significantly more toward employee health insurance premiums than what the state currently requires. The state requires districts to contribute a minimum of $225 a month. As you can see, over the past two years, the district has increased its contribution to the health insurance fund by 12%, bringing the monthly contribution to $545 per month per employee, which is $320 above what's required. This reflects our ongoing commitment to supporting employees while helping them manage the rising cost of healthcare. These are the proposed 2026 PPO Gold Choice premiums by tier, which would go into effect in January. For example, most of our employees choose the employee-only plan tier. The proposed increase is $14 per month, which breaks down to about $7 per paycheck. You can also see the remaining employee tiers, how much they would increase, and the cost per paycheck. We've also included a comparison with nearby districts, and Bryan ISD still offers the best rates. This reflects our strong commitment to supporting our employees and keeping our benefits competitive. And these are the proposed high deductible plan premiums by tier, which would also go into effect in January. Once again, the employee-only tier is the most popular among staff. The proposed increase for that tier is $2.80 per month, which breaks down to about $1.40 per paycheck. You can also see the remaining employee tiers, how much they would increase, and the respective cost per paycheck. And we've also included a comparison with nearby districts here as well, and Bryan ISD still comes out ahead on every plan and every tier. And here, we have the proposed premiums for our dental plans, which also take effect in January. At every tier, you'll see a decrease in cost for both the updated Platinum Plan and the Silver Plan. The chart shows the savings broken down by month and by paycheck. As a part of our insurance analysis, we wanted to give a real-life example of how these changes affect a paycheck. Here, you see a teacher with 12 years of experience showing last year's salary compared to this year's. Even after the new health insurance take, um, take effect in January, the raise the employee received is not taken away. The increase in pay is still greater than the increase in premiums. We also ran this same analysis across other employee groups. And to be thorough, we even applied the most expensive insurance plan to the lowest-paid employee. When you factor in the $50 stipend that hourly employees will receive in December, along with the $50 weekly attendance stipend available to bus drivers, the results are clear. Even the toughest scenario, even in the toughest scenario, take-home pay is still higher. And as I mentioned earlier, here are some of the benefit resources that we provide for all of our staff. We share newsletters and flyers, and we make sure that every employee knows about the Employee Health Center and how that's available to them. During new hire orientation, we go over benefit information in detail, and we continue to share updates throughout the year. We also have an onsite Blue Cross Blue Shield representative available daily to help answer any questions. We do everything possible to communicate benefit information and keep our staff informed on a regular basis. And once again, here is the benefits timeline that we shared at the prior board meeting. As you can see, today, September 22nd, is the board meeting where we are asking for your consideration and approval of the medical and dental plan changes, just as presented. Beginning tomorrow, we will start holding campus and department informational meetings, and these will run through the end of October. Open enrollment formally begins November 3rd and runs through November 21st. December will be the administrative month where, where staff enter all of the elected employee changes into the system so that everything is accurate and ready to take effect in January 1st, on January 1st, which is when the new plan year begins. Be happy to take any questions at this time.
May I, Mr. Stasny? Ms. Norma, I would like you just to go back to what we contribute with the district, the 545, I believe is what you said it would be. So, we're only required to do the 225. Again, I don't want to do math. We have about 3,000 employees? How many employees do we have?
About 2,500-ish.
Okay. So, if we're paying an extra 250, what is that, like, six, $700,000 that we are paying to help our employees? I, I'm just trying to talk about, when, when we run a deficit budget, there are things that we could do to get closer to balancing that budget, but it, those things come at the cost of our employees. So, I'd like for people to realize that this is why we, we do make a conscious decision sometimes to run a deficit budget, because we, as we've all said multiple times, we, our employees are, must be at our, at the front of all of our decisions that help our students. And so, I just wanted to point that out, that there, there are things we could cut out that we don't. And people ask me sometimes, well, tighten the belt, tighten the belt. And before I was on the board, it was easy to say, yeah, I don't know why they don't just tighten the belt. And when you're here, you realize tightening the belt has consequences for employees, and that is not something that we would want to do. So, I just wanted to point that out, that I'm really proud that we contribute more than double the state requirement on them for our employees. Thank you.
That is certainly something that we are proud of as well, sir. Thank you for pointing that out.
I, this is always a tough time for me, because when I quit thinking like a teacher, I need to get off the board. And, you know, I was a young teacher, just married. I was a young teacher with one child, then two children, then three children, and went through all the stages of healthcare and, and everything that, you know, we now have to make choices about. And I always hate when we're able to squeeze and squeeze and give our employees, our loved employees, any type of pay raise, and then a month and a half later, we're upping the insurance premium. You know, it's, and, and I know most districts have to do that, but I hate it because we want to give our teachers everything we can, and then we, it's, it's not like throwing this at them, but it is something that, you know, they're, they're busy teaching right now. I mean, they're just keeping their heads above water. And, and then all of a sudden, we say, okay, your premiums are going up. But I know, because you and I've met, you and Ginger and I've met, and I've, I've met with all our insurance people, because before I can feel good in my heart that there's nothing else we can do, there's nothing else we can squeeze, like what Mr. Gonzalez just said, on, suck it up on our part. And as much as, you know, I hate that we are having to raise the premiums anything, I think you've done a really good job. I think you're doing a really good job in the communication that we're about to do and have been doing about how to choose your, your plan right. It's, you know, I was those, I was one of those teachers that, okay, I like this plan, click. Every year, I would just click, same plan, same plan. And there's so many changes that are going on now. I think communication is huge, probably as much as what we do for, for staff development. Anyway, I just know that it's what has to be done, and we have a great product for our staff. So, anyway, I just had to say that.
The education that you talked about is not just about this is why we're doing, what we're doing and why we're doing it, but it's to make sure our, all our employees understand that there are things that they can do without jeopardizing their health that can make a big difference on the bottom line for the district. And if, if, if things can be improved on that end, on, on our, the funds that are, are having to be paid out for claims, because some things were maybe, they could have gone to a place that was very, very good, high-quality, but wasn't near as expensive, and I'll just word it that way, then, then that's gonna reduce the district's costs, and we're going to be able to maintain this level and not be looking at, at another increase down the road if we don't kind of get, get control over this a little bit. So, again, this isn't about depriving our employees of care. This is about just making some decisions that they may not have even realized had an impact on the bottom line. So, I know y'all are including that in the education process, and that is incredibly important, and I appreciate it.
May I ask, I won't be as politically correct, I won't be too bad, but as far as our urgent care facilities that have increased our costs exponentially, have we had any luck? Can we discuss that now, or is this not the proper time? But, have y'all, I know we were gonna try to reach out to them, and, and have, have we made any progress? Can we discuss that right now, or do we need to post that for something separate to, to address?
I, I think it is part of this discussion. I don't know if they're prepared to say anything, or if this is still kind of an ongoing thing, and you'd rather delay it for another-
Yeah, if, if it's something-
We did meet, we did meet with Physicians Premier, and we did have some good conversations about, mainly just around the co-pay and just having an awareness for that, making sure that their staff are aware of what the rules of the game are. You know, whenever you go to an, to an emergency room, there, there is a co-pay. So, we had discussions around that, just to make sure that we were all on the same page. So, they're going back to their staff and making sure that they're following everything that they're supposed to be following.
Some of the head honchos apparently were shocked that this was going on.
Yes. We, we have not reconvened. We did have an initial meeting, wasn't an urgent care freestanding ER, that's out-of-network, and the cost associated with that. That's part of our plan, is we go out to meet with every single campus in all of our departments, is to create an awareness, starting with, we are a self-funded insurance, you know, user. So, there's a lot of misconception and confusion around all of that. And the rising healthcare, healthcare costs are not unique to Bryan ISD. So, we have a, a pretty methodical plan to go out and educate our staff so that they can make informed decisions when Michael's team goes out for open enrollment, including where you go for non-emergency uses. For emergency, I, I plan to say, our entire team plans to say, go wherever is best suited for you and your family if it's an emergency. By all means, go in and get the best care that you possibly can. For non-emergency visits, we plan to spend a lot of time in, having that particular conversation. But, the, the entity that we met with, we've not reconvened, we feel optimistic.
But, but that, that was my question. They were open to discussing it.
We had great conversation.
Great.
And we have a really healthy partnership with them, and we look forward to a good outcome. But, the, the key to, immediately, the immediate next step is communication, awareness, education.
Yes, ma'am.
And informing our staff so they can make the best decisions possible for their client plan. It's literally our plan. We can control the narrative as much as possible. And to Mr. Stasny's point, if we can right the ship and get where we need to be on solid ground, we would like nothing more than to ask the board to consider putting that money back into the paycheck of our, of our staff. Because right now, that, we have competing priorities. We're spending a lot of money on healthcare that comes out of the same pot of money that we use for compensation. So, it would be a wonderful thing to put that money back into everyone's paycheck.
Well said. Yes, ma'am.
And thank you, Ginger and Norma, for going to them, going out and advocating on our behalf. And a lot of time, it, it, a discussion can go along, a long, long way. You think you're on opposite sides of something, and you can, if we can reach something where we're all happy, it's, it's at least worth a shot. So, thank y'all again for making that effort.
Norma, I think when we go out to educate our staff, we have to realize, all staff aren't from this area. And so, maybe they might need a little help with names and addresses of where they can go. Because at the end of the day, I'm, everybody's here for a dollar. I can't say that company's gonna do the right thing, because if they're losing money, that's gonna hurt them. So, and they don't care that they're, what it's costing us, as long as we're putting it in their pocket. That's just the truth about it.
Yes.
And so, these are our staff, and we need to make sure we take care of our staff in order to get what we want from them. And so, even for the ones that are from here, everybody might need a little education on where, where can I go, where's the proper place for me to go, so that they will know. Because I, I'm just gonna go to one place, St. Joe's Emergency. I don't know about these other places. I have no clue, and I'm from here. That's just where I'm gonna go. And I know I'm not gonna have to pay any money when I get there, so I'm happy about that. But, maybe the other staff need to know where is a proper place for them to go that is not gonna put them in a bad situation. not going to put them in a bad situation later on? Or put the district.
Put the district.
In a situation later on.
Yes, ma'am. That is an excellent.
Ms. Benford, actually, you just hit the nail on the head. Mr. Stires, would you walk that paper up to Ms. Fertile right now so she can reference what we plan to start distributing tomorrow? It's exactly, perfect segue.
Does it show, does it show what it costs the district as well?
Well, this is the list of all the entities that are available for you.
So, I was going to ask before we get into that, is do we, do we show each individual employee, or do we have something that shows them, like Felicia says, you know, we're, I understand you have out of family, you're worried about out-of-pocket, but I think also, if we were to educate them and show them, if you use A, B, and C, here's the cost of the district. Here's the cost if you use this one, it's out of network, it's, you know, there's no deductible to you, but it costs the district. I think if we got that out, and people realize that we are a team, that we are self-insured, so do we, do we give them that information?
We do, yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir, we do. And we are fully prepared, as Ms. Carabine said, to go campus by campus and speak to every single employee. We have this information available. We're making flyers. Just, again, just to reiterate, we have lowest cost options, reasonable cost options, highest cost. We're going to be sharing with all of our employees what the co-pays are, where you go, what the cost is to the district. Making sure that everybody knows the difference between those freestanding ERs versus going to an urgent care, and what the cost is to the district, ultimately to all employees. So, no, we have amazing flyers. We have lots of other information, too. We are ready to go on a roadshow, and it's going to be team education. So, we're going to go out, and we're going to educate our employees on where to go, when to go, how to get there, so that way, they understand, just they have a whole 360 view on how the program works.
And see, that's the beauty of being self-funded.
Exactly, yes, ma'am.
Is when we're talking to them, they're talking to the company. You know, when you're talking to them, when y'all are educating them, it's not like Blue Cross Blue Shield is in Chicago, or wherever Blue Cross Blue Shield is. And so, that, and when we're giving them the address to a certain doctor, group of doctors and things like that, that's the greatest thing about being self-funded is, it's all personal.
Very.
Because it's us.
Yes, ma'am.
And doesn't go much higher than everybody sitting right there in the super, well, I guess us, but, so, that, being self-funded and y'all doing your road tour, it's like the biggest people in Blue Cross Blue Shield coming and visiting directly with our employees.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And, you know, Ms. Waller, to your point, one of the unique things about Bryan ISD, and this is something I haven't experienced at any district I've been at, we have an onsite Blue Cross Blue Shield representative here. Not here today, but that she lives at our district, and she's able to answer questions. And so, it's nice to have that one person here in case there's ever any questions, just, you know, deeper into the, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield specifics. So, it's nice to have that benefit of somebody here on campus.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that the health and well-being of our employees is a top priority. And if there's ever a true emergency, we implore them to go wherever they see is best fit for themselves or their family. But for non-emergent, to your point, Mr. Gonzalez, we're going to spend a lot of time on awareness, because I was new here nine years ago. To your point, Ms. Benford, I didn't know where to go or what to do. So, the flyer is going to be very helpful to help people make good decisions.
And I've appreciated your openness when you said you went to some of these clinics that charge more and cost us more in the long run, and you need to realize it.
Sure, sure. When you're brand-new and you don't feel well, you're just looking for a place to go. And so, we're going to help our employees understand the best place possible to take care of themselves and their family.
If you don't understand it, then I'm sure everyone across the board doesn't understand it. So, thank you.
Right. We bear that burden, and we are committed, starting tomorrow. Roadshow begins.
Roadshow, I like that. Thank you.
I just want to make an additional comment. This process has been educational for me, understanding fully insured versus self-insured as a district. And as a small business owner, every year, our health insurance premiums go up, and I have to pass those along to my employees. And that's, I don't have a choice in that. And every year, since I've had this plan in place, it's increased over time. And so, this, all this conversation has been interesting because the amount of deliberation and concern over these decisions and how they impact our employees was taken into great, into great detail. But I also understand that the, you know, there's a, there's a financial need to change the trajectory of our fund balance and the overall impact of all these decisions on our district. And you jumped quickly from the slide of comparable districts, and I think that that's one that, you know, where not only are we, the contribution is higher from a district, from our district, but also just what the landscape of comparable districts and how their premiums look compared to ours. I think there is a constant effort to try to put more money into our employees' pockets, and I appreciate that. And also, on the flip side of the coin, really taking matters under great detail of consideration in terms of what's, what will benefit the district long-term in terms of our financial stability and success. So, there's a, there's a number of things happening here that are greatly under consideration. I think the effort and the compassion of everyone here is to just do what's best for the employees, and these are difficult decisions in times for these, for, you know, all of us to make these decisions. So, thanks for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir. I cannot take the full credit. Mr. Stires and his team work really hard behind the scenes. Lots of spreadsheets, lots of Excel workbooks, lots of analytical work going on behind the scenes. So, I can't take the full credit.
You have a great team. I've seen, I haven't seen everybody's work, but I know Mr. Stires is always on point. I mean, he has, I've been so impressed with, when we've asked for information, the detail, and he always is ahead of the questions I'm going to ask. You do a great job, sir. All of y'all do. Thank y'all very much.
We try to anticipate as much as we can, and I just want to reiterate, Ms. Carabine said it best, the same pot of money that we use for compensation is the same pot of money that's, that's funds our health insurance plan. They really are interconnected. One talks to the other, one feels the impact of the other. So, yeah, that's something that's really unique to Bryan ISD. But to Ms. Waller's point, it is a position, a good position to be in because of the flexibility and the design and the flexibility that we have to be able to move the plan around, change the co-pays, change co-insurances, change the out-of-pocket. So, I think that's a better place to be than being fully insured, where you have Blue Cross basically telling us what to do, and there's not really much, you know, you're just kind of in that straitjacket, and you have to just accept what the, you know, what the increase is and move on. So, I still believe we're in a good place.
All right. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Stasny, I move approval of the group benefits, risk pool, design changes, and employee medical plan premium recommendations for 2026 as presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, and seconded by Ms. Benford. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? unanimous, passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to get the story out so that it's not just sounding like an arbitrary decision. It certainly was not. Okay, the next item is discuss and consider something that's a little more mundane, $50,000, over $50,000, excuse me, for the purchase of buses. This is like deja vu, but anyway, that's okay. Well, we're going to talk about buses again. For good reason, I might add.
What do y'all do with all these buses?
Good evening. We're asking for three additional buses to add to our fleet. I know we had just done this last month, but that was the third, third day of school. We now have increased our ridership by approximately 800 students, and so, we've added four additional routes. So, we're in need of these three additional buses to our fleet.
Make sure Ms. Marilyn gets one of those new buses if she ever has, she ever has to drive.
I move approval of the purchase of two 77-passenger buses and one 59-passenger special-needs bus from Longhorn Bus Sales in the amount of $453,751 to be funded by the Internal Transportation Service Fund as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Harlan, seconded by Ms. Waller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous, passing. All right, that was short and sweet. Moving on, we've got the, consider approval of resolution setting the tax rate, which, oh, I'm sorry. Consider resolution setting the tax rate for 2025. This is the subject of, was the subject of our public hearing, and now it's up for possible action. So, you can give us the really quick, quick summary of what we heard earlier.
We've got a little summary slide coming right up here, which was our final slide for the public hearing. At this time, I would be more than happy to take any questions. I did go into some detail, talking about the differences between our M and O rate, being that it was divided into two tiers. I'd be happy to take any questions, if there's any questions on the TEA's MCR, or the enrichment pennies, or the INS. But at this time, our recommendation is to keep the tax rate exactly the same on both the M and O side and the INS of .9469. I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any, at this time.
I move approval of the property tax rate for 2025 to be set by the attached resolution at .6769 for maintenance and operations, and .27 cents for debt service, for a total tax rate of 94 cents, .9469 per $100 valuation as presented.
Second.
All right.
They have to take it up to the fourth decimal.
We did set you, we set him up for you.
Did y'all have the same math teacher?
Motion made by Mr. Sinis, and seconded by Ms. Benford. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
What grade was that?
Not that easy.
Decimal. Third grade, is that like, third or fourth?
94, 69 tenths. Ms. Waller, can you have like a little class for that? Desmos, use decimals.
All right, now, we have consideration of approval of the 2025-26 campus improvement plans, and we're going to at least start with Ms. Montoya. I don't know if you're going to do it all, but anyway, you're up.
All right. Good evening. This evening, I'm going to share some information about the campus improvement plan process. I have four principals that will be joining me as well. So, every year, campus principals lead a team from their campus through the campus improvement process, resulting in the end in their campus improvement plan for their campus. They start this program, or this process, in February, and it goes through the remainder of the school year. But they start off with, each of their plans has to be aligned with the board goals. So, that's where they start, is with the board goals. And as they go through this process, then at the very end, they have, the plan has to be approved by their CPIC committee, which is their Campus Performance Improvement Committee. So, there are some required elements by both the state and federal government, and some of those elements include a comprehensive needs assessment. So, that's looking at a lot of data. They look at assessment data, they look at demographic data, they look at survey results, they pull together a lot of data. They also have to have measurable objectives for student performance. They have to include the strategies that are going to be used. They have to include the budget that's going to be used, and timelines. And then, like I said, each plan has to be approved by their CPIC committee, which is their Campus Performance Improvement Committee, which includes community, includes parents. They're a part of that committee. So, some of the activities and all that we share with the campuses, so district and campuses share, as part of this, and you'll probably hear some of these things in their plans, they're going to share some things with you. So, district and campus staff work together to do what's called curriculum and instruction support walks. These include our campus, or our curriculum coordinators walking classrooms with our campus administrators. We do this each six weeks with each campus. We also have our Foundation's Trend Data Walks, and this is looking at the implementation and effectiveness of our Safe and Civil Schools programs. We pull a lot of data from that. We also, every Monday, we do campus support team meetings at campuses, and the purpose of this walk is a dedicated team of people from the district to include our CNI staff as well as school leadership. We provide on-campus support and partner with the campus administration by focusing on student achievement and school climate and culture. We review data during those visits, and we also do learning walks. So, we visit classrooms, we talk about strengths, and we talk about areas that where there may be more support needed. This year, we're also involved in the Texas Instructional Leadership. This was through the, funded through the Lasso Grant, and the focus on, is on grades five through eight. This process provides training and coaching support to campus administrators, and it takes them through the instructional coaching cycle. So, they're learning how to support teachers through the coaching cycle. So, four campuses are going to join me to talk about their key focus areas from their campus improvement plans in the area of student achievement and growth. So, there'll be four principals that are going to come up and share, and I will name all four of them, and then each of them will come up. So, Dr. Alma Velez will come up to talk about Anson Jones Elementary, Mr. Michael Gibson from Jane Long Intermediate, Mrs. Becky Luna from SFA Middle School, and Dr. Greg Boe High will come up from Bryan High School.
We might have been a little resistant to having all of the principals come, so this strategy is to try to give us a good cross-section from top to bottom of the district. And then, I guess, at some point, if there's something different that might be occurring, we may find, get that at a later date, or you can even bring that up today. But I just want to make sure everybody understands, well, why do we just have these? It's to give us at least an example at each level, correct?
Yes, at each level. That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Stasny.
So, good evening. So, our priorities at Jones Center on improving and closing the gaps in student achievement in the areas of reading and math, as well as on TELPUS, which is the measure on English proficiency of our emergent bilinguals. So, that being said, these are just a few of the strategies that we are hoping will help us achieve these priorities. So, you'll see the two main bullets are centered around instruction, as well as professional development of our teachers. So, we are entering into year three of avid implementation school-wide. We are one of two avid elementaries here in Bryan, and so, we have definitely broadened our scope of implementation, focusing in on what happens during professional learning communities when they're planning for instruction, focusing on specifically academic vocabulary, as well as just increasing the average strategies that we're implementing in our classroom instruction, along with trying to ensure that English proficiency is a focus. And so, we are holding teachers accountable through Summit K-12, which is a digital platform that mimics the TELPUS assessment, and so, therefore, provides our students opportunities for listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And since we have a, over half of our population is emergent bilingual, this is definitely a strong focus for us. And then, we all know that instruction alone will not help us achieve that. We also have to make sure that we're capturing students' hearts, that we're building those connections, and establishing a strong culture, school culture that focuses not just on student-to-student connections, but staff-to-student connections. So, that, with that, we are proud, I'm proud to say that we are year nine now as a national showcase campus of capturing kids' hearts. So, that's taken a lot of work and established a huge trust between not only our students and our staff, but also our community that surround us. And then, recently, we began implementing the Ron Clark House System on our campus to help improve the school connectivity. So, we have a lot of So we have a lot of fun with this. It's one of our positive behavior support systems that we have. Every student and staff member is sorted into one of eight houses, and we focus on recognizing students for demonstrating essential aid, as well as just excelling in class. And we come together to award top-scoring students, and so the top picture you'll see is our first round of students that won their, their house hoodie. So they're one of the select few that get to wear the house hoodie, everybody else just wears house colors. So with that being said, I'm going to wrap up inviting you all to our House Spirit Rally on October 30th at 1:45, where we will be awarding more students, as well as participating in some fun team-building activities. So, thank you.
Would you send us an email? I think some of us, if you sent us an email, because I forget, I would be happy to come.
Thank you, I will.
That's a good point. It's, I'm, I'm, I'm hopelessly probably not, actually not going to remember or know, but, but the reminders are great.
Yes, ma'am.
And of course, we have, we have our assistant somewhere, she's, we'll, we'll get, we'll get some help.
It would hurt to send us one.
Yes, I will. Thank you all so much.
We, we can't go to everything, but we sure like to go to some, a lot of stuff, as much as we can.
I just got confirmation juries on it, and she will add it to the.
Okay.
Thank you.
So will the, the kids stay in those houses?
Yes, they remain in the house the entire time that they're at Jones.
That's, that's.
It's really neat.
So will they have counselors and administrators that work?
We're all sorted, custodial staff, cafeteria staff, we're all sorted, and we award, we all get to award points. And so, you know, we, everybody is, is working hard to make sure that they're doing the right thing, because everybody's looking.
That is, that's great. That's a real house, yeah.
It's been a game changer for us, so.
That's great.
So Waller, it's like the, was it the chalk, I was a chalktaw when I was at Anson Jones. Remember that? They had all the chair keys, we had the, did you have this? At Anson Jones?
I don't know. See, sorry.
All right, good evening. So I'm going to talk about long and immediate a little bit here. Some of the things you're going to see are going to be kind of common across different schools. A couple of things that we're going to focus on this year is school-wide avid implementation. We also have avid on our campus, and it's something that had gotten kind of spread out, but we've kind of refocused and brought it in a little bit tighter, so that we can be a little more effective with it, do a little more justice with it, and it's kind of centralized to a specific teacher, and then we kind of share those avid things across our campus. We've implemented planners, our students have those things, both with our students and our adults, trying to teach the adults how to plan and try to work with our students, and how to focus on those things in class that are important, and give them a central spot to do that. Also with progress monitoring, teaching kids how to monitor their self, how to look at that other self, set individualized goals, so that they can become more effective in their learning, and know where they're headed as well. We've also tried to, to look at reshaping our instructional strategies on our campus, teacher lesson implementation, really trying to push more to the focus of internalization of the material, instead of just having a PowerPoint that's sitting in front of the classroom and, and teaching from that, but really internalize and, and spend our time in planning a little more effectively and looking at data, which is what we're trying to restructure our focus and how we do our planning.
Would you, would you mind, would you just tell us?
Sorry.
What some of these acronyms stand for, I don't know if you, I don't think you said Y-COR.
Oh, WICAR Strategies, so writing inquiry, collaboration, organization, reading, sorry, I know that.
Okay. Put you on the spot.
Yeah, right, so basically those.
Hey, we have a hard time with numbers, so there's no, no judgment being passed over here.
We make a good team, though.
Only that has a decimal.
Those are just strategies for students using the classroom in, in the avid framework. And then, we recognize on our campus are very similar to Ms. Velez and Anson Jones, we have a very high EB population on our campus, emergent bilingual campus on our, students on our campus, and we understand that we struggle in reading, writing, and speaking with the, being a, not a first language that they're used to in English. And so we, with coordination with the district, we were able to hire a bilingual coach on our campus full-time, and she is taking some of those things that help those learners, and we are spreading those things across the entire campus, because it's good teaching. It's not just for EB learners, but it's good teaching and good strategies, and so that's something that we're focused on as well. We also use Summit K-12, and then different silent strategies. Then also thrown there are the Texas Instructional Leadership, the things that, you know, Dr. Montoya already spoke about, coaching admin to coach teachers to help them be more effective teachers in the classroom.
May I ask a quick question? How effective the bilingual instructional coach, I know they're obviously focused, like you said, on here, are targeted for the EB students.
Right.
But how has that translated in test scores and every, I mean, it has to be an improvement if you've got that kind of one-on-one?
So it's, it's brand new this year to have a full-time person on our campus. What I will tell you is in PD Week, whenever we had her present to the staff, we had teachers from all content areas across the campus coming to her, talking to her about the strategies that she was already talking about, and we've seen it in planning, we've seen note-taking, we've seen things in PowerPoints, we've seen word walls, things that are just good teaching across the board, across our entire campus.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I quickly checked my slides for acronyms, because I wasn't sure I'd pass that test, guys, but I'm here representing SFA. So one of our top priorities this year is improving math and reading achievement. So we're focusing on raising performance by strengthening daily instruction, and you'll see those embedded strategies listed on the screen. That looks like regular data digs with goal setting, and that's individual goal-setting conferences with students in each of their core classes. A stronger focus on academic vocabulary, and then, I feel redundant saying this, but avid is the common theme tonight, and so just the emphasis on those note-taking strategies, planners, independent reading, and making sure that we're not, avid isn't just a class, but it's a campus-wide culture. Moving on, we are spending a lot of time this year working on closing the achievement gap for special populations, and you'll see that we have implemented some programs and some strategies to close that achievement gap for our English learners, and our at-risk students, and our special education students. And then, most importantly, none of this happens without strong teachers, so we know that we have to have the best people in the classrooms, so making sure that we have highly-qualified professional staff, and that means 100% of our staff being certified or actively enrolled in a certification program. So we're committed to growing our staff in their content areas as well. Thank you all.
Good evening. So at Bryan High School, one of the first things that is up on our board is to meet the educational needs of every student, and that is, that is a key focus for us. In order to do that, one of the roles that we did add this year was, we took an assistant principal position and made that our Dean of Instruction, which is Brandy Morley, and she's really stepped into that role and is working closely with all of our star-tested subject areas during their planning time, as well as the kind of work that's going into their class, so that we're meeting their needs to, to see those star scores really grow. Our at-risk students, we've got opportunities for them, whether that be the Edgenuity classes for credit recovery. We work pretty close with Dr. Casper at MC Harris to identify the correct students to get to MC Harris if there's a need for that. And then we do have our night school that will be starting soon for our students to have the opportunity to catch up, and we're working with our staff right now to prepare them for the type of strategies that they need to have in order to get those students the education that they need to catch up. One of the things that we do want to continue to do is build our culture. That is extremely important at Bryan High School right now, is not just at Bryan High School, but as part of the district as an overall whole. And so we've got quite a few things that we're going to be implementing on top of the Foundation's avid and champs that we have. We're working with our students to be creative. We've got an attendance committee with students that, we're hearing from them, what is it that's going to make them come to school? And so we've started a few new strategies with our students, such as a certain number of days that they attend consecutively can earn some of the time back. So one of the things I had heard from our students when I first began was, I get into such a hole that I lose credit, what's the point of coming if I can't get out? And so we asked several of them, what if you came five days in a row and could earn several hours back a week by just coming consecutively? And so I talked with one young man the other day, and he hasn't missed school yet this year, because he said he knows he owed enough time that it was not possible for him to come earlier than the bus, or to, to stay late. And so he earned 12 hours back of his time that he owed previously. And so we're seeing students that are attending at a higher rate, because we're giving them an opportunity to earn it at a pace that works for them. And then increasing our parental involvement as well. We do have our community pep rally, which will be the homecoming pep rally for Bryan High School. I don't know how big it's going to be yet, but we're working to make this a pretty special event. We've heard from a lot of our students, a lot of parents, and they want things to come back to Bryan High School, as well as introduce new things. So we've got Sadie Hawkins, that, the parents are helping us organize that. We're going to have items like talent show, we're going to have Powder Puff is coming back. We've got a Powder Buff, which is a boys volleyball, and so I've reached out to, to Ms. Layton a few times as well to see what are they doing at Butter to increase that involvement, and what kind of ideas. So really hearing what's already going on in the district, we want to make sure that we're doing that at Bryan High as well. Lastly, it's equipping our students with knowledge and skills for post-secondary success. One of the things that I wanted to make sure that we were doing was getting ahead of the game. And so with our college career and military readiness rate, waiting till their senior year to make sure that we're hitting those numbers is a little too late. And so this year, we're working with our students that we're going to start TSI testing for that college readiness, their junior year. We want to make sure that we know if our students are ready for college and career as they're going into that senior year, so that we're hitting those numbers early on. That way, we can identify the correct students and get them into the courses that they need. If that's a college prep English or a college prep math, are we getting them into the correct CTE pathway? Are they in an, an opportunity to earn IB or AP credit so that they're hitting college and career? And so our goal is to increase at a substantial rate with our students for college and career, because we're, we're addressing it earlier than that senior year, so we can see those numbers jump up pretty well.
I, I would just like to say, I thank you for bringing things back. I spoke to Ms. Layton, I always give her such a hard time. I said when she was here, I was going to ask her what she's doing. But speaking to her, she's had a lot more engagement, and she said, you know, it's amazing, that's what we've always talked about, is getting the parents involved. But I would like to thank you for taking the initiative to think outside the box and bring back the old box and everything else. I think that's really important as a Bryan High graduate, what you say, it really does mean a lot, and it, it's, it gives us a sense of culture, and that's what we need, so thank you.
That's the support that I felt from coming into this district, and Ms. Layton is the reason that I applied and I came here, and then the support I have from Dr. Holtcamp, without that, it's every day I know I can turn to her. So it's the community around you, and that's, it's a close-knit community. I tell the kids when they're coming in the morning, like, hey, smile, and they're like, why? And I'm like, today you can meet your spouse. Half the district seems to have met their spouse, so it's like, you've got an opportunity, today might be the day. And so.
How do you argue with that, Dr. Boheiz? How do you argue with that?
It's a good place, and it's, it's become home very quickly, so I appreciate that. So thank you all.
Thank you.
And I thank you, Mr. Boheiz, for, you know, at high school, middle school, intermediate, sometime along the way, we lose that thought plan of get to know the student. We know it's in elementary, but when they get to high school, we just want to educate them. But if we don't know the child, we can't educate the child. And so I've heard a lot of great things, a lot of parents, you know, and a lot of the high school, parents complaining, my kids complaining, but they have not. They've said that you've made an effort to get to know the children, and they see that in the staff, they're getting to know the children. And I think that makes all the difference. We think as they get older, we just have to educate them, we don't have to know them. Wrong mentality, from pre-K all the way till they walk that stage. We need to know these kids, people that interact with these kids, teachers, whatever, you need to know who's on your campus, you need to get to know those students, where they come from, and what's going on with them. And that helps them to be what we intend for them to be as a board, productive citizens when they leave out of this school.
Yes, ma'am.
Well said. And I mean, you got the Reader's Choice Award after a couple of months on the job, I mean, that's just impressive, that's.
It was that, the National Merin, I mean, it was just all sorts of.
Just amazing what you can do in a couple of months, Dr. Boheiz. Thank you.
You know, in the Bible, it says, high school has to be fun.
Well, I taught elementary, so I'm bringing that up a little bit, so there's some of that.
Whatever it takes, sir.
That's right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for either myself or the four principals?
I just wanted to make a comment, not a question. One of the things I did hear last week at the Texas EdCon as it relates to school safety, and, you know, lots of schools are considering all the things, from detection systems, whatever those may be, to more cameras and all of that. But what came out as the most impactful piece for school safety is relationships. And the adult-to-student relationship is absolutely critical in having those trusted adult relationships with children. So I'm glad to see that embedded in all of these as a thread, so thank you so much for that.
Agree 100%.
All right, so we would ask that the board consider approval of the 2025-2026 campus improvement plans.
Well, and will you do that? I do have one, one quick comment slash question, more, more of a comment, I guess, and that's, I know we, we do to an extent, but, but we need to, we need the board to hear updates on how things are going, and what is really working, and what maybe didn't work as well, and especially if we're in any position to do anything about it, if there are some obstacles that are, that are causing a problem. Because this sounds really great, and I, and I, I think it's going to work, but at the same time, I would, I would love to know, as we progress through the year, the school year, you know, what really is working, and, and what, what, what does, is, is, are we still struggling with? So that's my only comment, it's just that.
We can absolutely do that.
I don't know to the extent we've done it in the past, but I don't always remember getting a lot of, you know, good updates during the year, so please, please, y'all try to figure out a way to do that, and that would be great.
I agree, Mr. Stasny. We can't fix it if we don't know there's a problem, and if they need help, then I think we're all more than willing to do whatever we can.
Absolutely.
I move approval of the 2025-2026 campus improvement plans as presented, and authorize the administration to make adjustments as necessary to meet the needs of students.
Second.
See, that's how it's.
Thank you.
All right, motion made by Ms. Benford, seconded by Mr. Bryan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. Okay, I think we are to close session. The board will now convene in closed session to discuss the following items, as allowed by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, .0821, .074, and .0761. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will occur after the board reconvenes in open meeting. The time is now 8:20. The time is now 8:20.
Okay. The board reconvened in open session at, what does that say? At eight fifty?
Eight fifty, yes sir.
Okay, eight fifty PM. No action was taken and closed session. There being no further business this meeting is adjourned at eight fifty.